Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Southfield Regular Meeting being held on Monday, November 15th at 6:00 via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Present.
Brightwell?
Yeah.
Cruz?
Present.
Frazier?
Here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
And Taylor? Madam President, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I would just like to make an announcement before we go to our swearing-in video. We have some technical difficulties with the streaming of the video via WebEx. So I'm asking, first of all, if everyone that is viewing during via the WebEx, that you would please mute your line. There is a slide that is now on the screen. If you click on the HTTPS, that will take you to the video of the swearing-in. All those that are watching via Cable 15 and/or the website, you do not have to do anything. You will see this swearing-in, the oath of the office, as normal. So again, all of us that are watching via WebEx, please mute our lines, and we would have to click on the link that's on the screen right now, the HTTPS link, to view the swearing-in ceremony, which will start now.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the mayor to the best of my ability.
I will.
Sign and print.
Mm-hmm.
And this is... Congratulations.
Thank you.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of City Councilmen to the best of my ability.
I do.
Sign right there, print. You are awesome!
Thank you very much.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of City Councilmen to the best of my ability.
I do.
And congratulations. You're all set. Congratulations.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of City Councilmen to the best of my ability.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of City Councilwoman to the best of my ability.
I will. Alrighty.
I do solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully perform my duties of the Office of City Clerk. Please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright. Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of City Treasurer to the best of my ability.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're all set. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Have a good one.
We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now come to the election of officers, which will be conducted by our city clerk. Madam Clerk?
Good evening to the honorable body. I will now open up nominations for the Office of the President of City Council.
Oh, Madam Clerk? Oh, go ahead.
Councilwoman Banks, I nominate Councilwoman Lenny Taylor to be President.
Thank you. I accept.
Byron Frazier, I support.
We're not there yet. We've got to keep it open, and then I have to call for nominations one more time. Any other nominations on the floor? One once, one twice, third time, we'll close nominations. And we would just need a... Right now on the floor, Lenny Taylor has been the only one nominated for Council President, and we can take a... A council can take action and move it forward with this. So we can have a motion.
Now is it time for me to support the nomination?
We need a motion.
Even though she's the only one?
Pardon? Councilwoman Banks nominated her, so we need a motion to... For her to be Council President.
Councilwoman Banks, I move that Lenny Taylor be considered Council President.
Support.
It's my property to move and support for Councilwoman Lenny Taylor to be President, and we just need the roll call for that. Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lenny Taylor is now the Council President, and I will turn the meeting back over to her for nominations for Council President Pro Tem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of you for your support. I now open nominations for Council Pro Tem.
Councilwoman Banks?
Yes.
I nominate Councilwoman Ari Mandelbaum for Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Madam President, Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Brightwell for President Pro Tem.
Okay. Are there any others? Hearing none, I now declare nominations closed. I will now entertain a motion for Ari Mandelbaum for Office of Council President Pro Tem.
Councilwoman Banks, I nominate Councilwoman Ari Mandelbaum for Pro Tem.
Is there a support?
Can Ari support that?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Mandelbaum, for Ari Mandelbaum to be the Council President Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cruz?
Oh.
Frazier?
No.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
No.
Okay. Councilman Ari Mandelbaum has been elected as the Council President Pro Tem with four votes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Next, we have our communications. Let me read our statement real quick. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or City Council member or elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or City Council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the City Council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If the person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed to be, by the presiding officer, to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the City Council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting and/or be directed to have their microphone muted. Madam Clerk, we will now open for anyone that would like to speak under communications.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Madam President, words matter. At least words in the Southfield City Charter, they should matter. To say that for the last 52 years, that the 46th District Court is called the Southfield Municipal Court in Chapter 7 in the Southfield City Charter, your charter, Madam Chair, is a lie, a big lie, a Trump-like lie, a whopper. Ask yourself this one question. Should a Southfield civics teacher be allowed to use the Southfield City Charter, that is to say Council's Charter, as a textbook to teach Southfield civics, that is to teach perverted civics to your child and to your grandchild and to Southfield students yet unborn? Madam Chair, today and throughout the nation, the hot-button subject regarding education is critical race theory, CRT. CRT is a challenge to mainstream racial justice. Trump-like conservatives are in sharp disagreement with CRT. That is, they are for the status quo. CRT is a search for the truth. Likewise, an elimination of Chapter 7 in the Charter is comparable to CRT, in that both items are in search for the truth and not, and not, an alternative set of facts that are allowed to germinate a judicial cancer upon this city. After 52 years, it is about time that this City Council delete Chapter 7, that is the big lie from your outdated Charter, along with the many other outdated items, by creating a Charter Commission. If the City of Detroit, that is if the dysfunctional City of Detroit can mandate periodically a ballot initiative for a proposed Charter Commission in order to try to update their Charter, then this Council, the Southfield City Council, should be able to do the very same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, good evening, Council. Want to congratulate the President and the President Pro Tem on their reelection, and I think that was a very good idea moving forward. I'm not sure... Well, let me first of all introduce myself. This is Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm not sure when the city will be able to have the in-person meetings. And with that being said, some of these council meetings are extremely long, and when you're listening in on the phone, you have the issue with your battery, you have the issue of falling asleep because you're in a very comfortable setting, waiting for the communications portion of the meeting. You have said, as a collective council, that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart, and I think that we are, and we all matter, we all make up the team for the City of Southfield. With that being said, I would like for this Council to seriously consider moving communications up to after presentations. It allows us to say what we have to say, and then we can choose to listen to the rest of the city's business if we want to, but for those that can't hold on, at least they've had their opportunity to have their say. And I really want you to consider that. Let us know that you mean what you said when you said that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. The next thing I would like for you to seriously consider, we listen to so many of the council members speak, or I can say babble, and they just go on and on and on, which is an indication that they're not totally prepared, and the babbling is to get the details to be able to make some sort of intelligent vote. Why not restore the people, the five minutes that we used to have? Once again, if you say that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart, give us our say, since we listen to so much and a lot that doesn't even make sense. But we are on the team, and we try to decipher what's being said. Show us we're on the top of the organizational chart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, no one else indicated that they want to speak this evening by pressing star three in the attendee list.
Okay. Thank you. Council, I will now turn to you for any remarks or comments or updates. And again, I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
I would just like to personally congratulate everyone on this past election in November and your win. Look forward to working with each and every one of you. Also, I would like to remind everyone that our COVID numbers are on the rise again. It's scary when we look at the numbers per day. I don't remember it being this high last year this time. Several of the hospitals have implemented emergency areas to address those that do have COVID because they don't want them in the hospital, and there is a new medicine that they will be providing to some patients. So just encourage everyone, please be careful if you haven't been vaccinated. Just do your research and maybe consider getting vaccinated so we can all stay safe and hopefully enjoy the holiday season and the New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your congratulations. I appreciate it. Thank you. Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yes, I would like to also echo what Ms. Banks indicated. Congratulations to the individuals on the election and also the appointments. Now I will get into a couple items, deal with veterans. The VA for the last six months started dealing with presumptive exposure, and if you served in Vietnam, Thailand, or Southeast Asia, they are now assuming that if you have a come down with a disability, it's assumed that you might have gotten this from your active-duty service. In dealing with Agent Orange and/or burn pits, the items that they have given disability for relates to bladder cancer, hyperthyroidism, Parkinson, and some asthma and a couple of items. So this is for veterans, and if you know of that, please pass this on that the VA is now, within the past six months, started looking at those illnesses and/or, there might be a couple more, but please get in touch with your primary care person at the VA and relate to them your disability and/or the illness that you have, and you could wind up getting disability compensation from the VA. And if you have any additional questions, you can reach me at the City Hall in the Clerk's Office, 248-796-5150. And I can just give you a little more detail, but the primary thing is to reach out to, if you are in the VA system, reach out to your primary care doctor and let them aware, make them aware that you are in those areas. And one other thing that I found interesting is that the VA, and I should note that, well, most of us know that we have female soldiers, the VA gives full maternity care to all individuals who are, who become pregnant and/or are pregnant while in the service. And they have a cooking program for expectant mothers and also mothers who currently have little people running around the house. It's a cooking program, they're doing a session, they will provide individuals with very nutritious recipes, and obviously if you, and I'm reading here, but obviously if you're breastfeeding, you need to have some very high-caloric meals, and so this is why they're going to teach you how to do this. It's a virtual program. It's sponsored by the VA, and it's for newly pregnant moms and those moms with toddlers to join the program. This is being held out of Battle Creek, Battle Creek, Michigan, the VA there. It's a virtual program that they will provide you, and obviously this is fairly interesting, they will provide you with pots, pans, food, small appliances, and different foods as you go through preparing those programs. So it's virtual, and you will cook, it'd be like a Julia Child, I guess, program. But this is, this was interesting to me, and obviously when I was Chair of Veterans Commission, this is something I would have broadcast at every opportunity I had. But please reach out to the Battle Creek VA. Their number is 269-966-5600. And I'll repeat that, 269-966-5600. And that's for Ms. Ashley Cain, the C-A-I-N, Ashley Cain. So, and then again, if this might be a bit much to jot down, but feel free to reach me at City Hall, Councilwoman Brightwell, and I can give you the info that I have that indicate how you, as a pregnant mother, a pregnant individual and/or mother, you can learn how to cook very nutritious meals for yourself, your family, and your expecting child, expected child. So, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your comments as well, and congratulations. I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, Madam President, good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I do want to congratulate all of my colleagues that were elected in this most recent election. I personally want to thank everyone that reached out to me to congratulate me personally, both residents and colleagues and otherwise. I really appreciate it and intend to do the very best work that I can do and carry the mantle on. Congratulations to our leadership as we move forward in this next year. And I think the only thing I just would like to say is this, that I know we talk about this all the time in terms... in terms of our health and everything, but, um, you know, COVID cases are still kind of, are, have not flattened out very much or as much as we would like here in Michigan. Um, so we gotta continue to stay focused on that. But on top of that, and on top of the potential fourth surge that's, that's possibly coming our way, uh, we also got to make sure we get out and get our flu shots and, uh, and possibly your pneumonia shots as well, um, so that you're covered, uh, all the way around. Because not only is COVID, COVID is not the only thing that's out there. And I can attest to that because I found out that I had pneumonia, um, actually on Election Day, I was in the hospital, uh, the latter part of the evening, uh, because I was feeling so bad and found out that I had what, in layman's terms, we call walking pneumonia. So I had it for a while and it just finally hit me that day. And, uh, that's the second time I've had it before. You know, they say when you get it once, you tend to get it at least two more times in lifetime or whatnot. But, um, so I'm just encouraging everyone to get your physicals, get checked out, get, get, uh, get your shots and, uh, protect yourself and others so that we can keep, uh, Southfield in particular, uh, safe and healthy and strong, uh, like the people that we are. And, um, just, uh, I just wish everybody the best and, uh, as we moving forward towards Thanksgiving, we have a lot to be thankful for. And, uh, so, uh, I'm already in that thankful spirit right now, and I hope you all are too. So I hope everyone has a good evening and, uh, we'll see you at the next meeting. Take care.
Thank you, Councilman Cruz. Thank you. Um, Councilman Frazier.
Yes, uh, I would also like to, uh, congratulate all the, uh, newly elected, uh, councilpeople and support group, the city clerk, the treasurer, and the mayor. Uh, it was, uh, from my perspective, it was a pretty quiet election. But, uh, uh, I'm looking forward to working with all of you this coming year. And, uh, one other thing I agree with, uh, the people that have said, if you haven't got your flu shot, you should get your flu shot. If you haven't got your COVID shot, you should get your COVID shot. Uh, and, uh, Councilman Cruz talked about pneumonia. And, uh, I can tell you a short, short story. A few years ago, I was in the doctor's office and the doctor said, uh, uh, do you want to have, uh, pneumonia shot? And I said, yeah, nah, I don't. He said, well, that's up to you, but people your age die of pneumonia. And I said, which arm do you put it in? So, uh, it's a real thing. Get your pneumonia shot and shingles too. Uh, shingles is another one that sneaks up on people. But the holidays are coming up and I wish everyone the happiest of holidays. Uh, it's going to be tough. Uh, every time I turn on the news, I see all the cargo ships standing still out in the Bay of Long Beach and, and, and all. And so if you've ordered stuff, it may be late, but it's not the presence that counts. It's your relationship with the people you're with that really counts. So happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Frazier. Thank you. Um, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh, thank you. Um, and I, I of course want to, want to thank the, uh, the residents, the voters, uh, in Southfield for continuing to allow me to serve, um, uh, one more, uh, more time as, uh, your city councilman. Um, I want to congratulate, uh, my colleagues, uh, on their elections as well as the, the mayor and our city clerk and our city treasurer. Uh, on the campaign trail, I used to always say that, um, I get along very well with my colleagues and I think we all get along with each other. And that's why we've been able to do so many great things, uh, for the city. Um, I also want to thank, uh, the candidates who also ran, uh, Charles Hicks and Jay Reed and Robert Vance Patrick and, and Ryan Scott Foster. Um, running for office is, is very difficult. Um, it takes a lot of time, a lot of work. And, um, you know, I always appreciate when anyone wants to step up and serve their community, uh, serve their community. Um, so thank you so much. Um, I really appreciate you adding your voice and your ideas, uh, to, um, to this campaign. Um, and I, I know for many, or for some of them, uh, this is their last time. Uh, you know, they're going to be serving in some capacity. Um, I see what, uh, Charles Hicks, he's serving in another capacity in the city. Um, but, yeah, I really appreciate, um, whenever Southfielders, um, have the courage, right, to serve, uh, the city of Southfield. Um, I also want to, you know, jump on the bandwagon that everyone else has been, uh, going with COVID. Um, it is, you know, very real, as many of my colleagues have said, that, you know, our rates are going up, our, uh, our rates of people getting, uh, infected with COVID. I mean, I would also too highly recommend that you get your vaccine, um, get your flu shot. I, I got my booster shot, um, right in the, uh, Southfield Pavilion. Um, Oakland County is there on Fridays. I got my booster shot, uh, last Friday. Um, for me, it was not, I didn't have a bad reaction. Um, so I was very lucky. I know, I know other people who did. Um, and they had a little, and they were a little, um, oh, you know, and had a little bit of a reaction, but you know, it lasted just for a few hours and then they were fine. Um, you can get your, your COVID shot, uh, in the Pavilion. You can get your flu shot. Um, I would highly recommend it because I think this is going to be, um, this might be a tough winter as far as, um, COVID goes. And so we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure we're staying safe, to make sure we can enjoy the holidays with our families. Um, and we want to make sure that, um, we've be COVID in 2022. Um, but that is all I have. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Thank you. Uh, I also, I want to, uh, congratulate my, my colleagues, um, who were reelected. Uh, as, as Councilman Hoskins mentioned, it's, it's great. We do, we do all get along. And as I was also walking, uh, neighborhoods and telling people we get along, I even showed them some of my flyers which had my colleagues listed, uh, with me, uh, especially around the Peace Pole in Southfield. So I thought that, uh, you know, showing them that we, we do get along and, and we do work together, uh, is why we, we can accomplish so much. So congratulations again to, to my colleagues, the mayor, the city clerk, city treasurer, and, and my fellow councilpeople, Councilman Hoskins, Councilman Cruz, um, and, uh, Councilwoman Taylor. I also want to thank the voters for, for trusting me. And as I've, as I've mentioned, that, um, I'm going to continue to fight to keep our city diverse, make it more walkable, attract younger families with affordable housing. We're going to have great schools, community activities. And with everyone's vote putting me back on the, on the city council, I go to work. And I also want to thank my, my family, especially my kids for, for putting up with me and, uh, letting me campaign and, and get out there. They were up with me until one o'clock in the morning when all the election results came in. So that was nice that they had my support and, and they were, they were with me every, every step of the way. So that was, uh, definitely nice. And, and I've, as I mentioned to many of the people that I've seen on the campaign trail, I'm always accessible and available. And you can always reach me, call me, text me. My phone number is two four eight two one, uh, sorry, two four eight nine zero five one zero nine five. And, um, I will work with everyone trying to get everything, uh, would help everyone with what they need. Uh, if I don't have the answer, I'll get you an answer. Hopefully it's the answer that you want to hear, but I can't always guarantee that. So, uh, again, thank you very much to the residents of Southfield. And congratulations to my, my colleagues. And thank you to my colleagues for trusting me to be the present pro tem for another term. I do appreciate it and I will be working with our council president to make sure that, uh, everything runs very smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Um, I too want to say thank you to everyone. And I know this sounds like you're hearing the same things over and over, but, and you are. And it's truly because we are very, very thankful and very grateful for this opportunity. I am so humbled and honored that so many of you, uh, voted for me and gave me that you put your confidence and your support in me by reelecting me for the next four years to serve as your city councilperson. This was, this election, we had over fifteen thousand voters that turned out. And I am so honored that over ten thousand of you voted for me. That, that humbled me so much. I, I can't say thank you enough. Um, not only did you entrust me with the responsibility of serving you as your councilwoman, but you also continued to brought, to provide me with valuable feedback that empowers me to get the job done. For that, I just say thank you. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. And I look forward to making the future of Southfield better. And I hope to continue this, making this community proud of me. I thank my council members, each and every one of you for putting your support in me by electing me to be your council president once again. It's, it's a humbling experience to have everyone vote for you and put their confidence in you. And I will not let you down. I appreciate the feedback that I receive, uh, from, from each and every one of you to help me through. No one person leads on their own. It takes the entire team. So for that, I just want to say thank you. I do want to give congratulations to everyone that ran. As was already stated, it's not an easy job to put your name out here and to run for office. But you, we had some really great people that did that this time. And to them, I just want to say congratulations for even making the attempt to do it. Uh, I want to congratulate all of those who won, uh, the mayor, city clerk, our treasurer, all of my council, fellow coun- council members. Uh, we have a tough job ahead of us, but we're, together we will get the job done. So I just want to say thank you for that. And again, thank you for entrusting me to be your council president one more year. Thank you so much. Um, I do want to ask that at our, um, next committee of the whole in December, that we discuss, uh, meeting in person. I know at the end of the year, the mandate for, um, virtual meetings will end due to state, um, law and, um, and we will now have to figure out how we're going to do that unless something changes. I do want to also ask that everyone get the vaccine, get your shots, your flu shots, and take care of yourself. Get plenty of rest, drink lots of water, all the main things that we all know to do. But somehow we get too busy and forget until we get sick. So let's try to take care of ourselves and do what we need to do before we get sick. But I would like to see us discuss what we want our meetings to look like next year when we come back in person, if that in fact happens. And, uh, again, I, I just want to say thank you. And I'm very humbled and very honored. So thank you once again, and that's all I have for tonight. Um, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, good evening, council and members of the public. Uh, I too, um, extend my congratulations to, uh, all of the newly reelected officials in Southfield. Uh, I want to say that I'm very grateful and humbled by the show of confidence in my leadership as mayor of Southfield. I do take the trust placed in me by my fellow citizens very seriously and will continue to be a responsive, uh, mayor to the concerns of residents and our business community. Looking for, uh, toward the next four years, I think residents can expect to see considerable improvements made to neighborhood streets, the installation of speed bumps and speed tables, great progress in the redevelopment of the Northland property, continued extensions of our urban pathways and sidewalks along with public art and streetscape amenities, park upgrades, and new housing. Southfield needs more subsidized senior housing. We have a waiting list, uh, at McDonald Towers, Edith Park Place and Woodbridge. We also need housing for empty nester who, uh, wish to downsize yet want to remain in the city. Uh, as this is where they've lived for years, uh, this is where their church or family or place of worship is. Uh, and, um, just like being in Southfield. And we also need what's termed workforce housing, affordable housing. We will continue to press DTE to, uh, reinvest in and upgrade Southfield's electrical grid. Further, we've been getting, uh, commitments by the top leadership of DTE for more intensive tree trimming and equipment replacement. Um, we will hold them, uh, to this promise and explore piloting the installation of underground electrical service lines to residential customers. This was something that Jerry Norcia, the, uh, CEO of DC, DTE, um, suggested, uh, when, um, City Administrator Thorne and I met with him. Um, in addition, uh, I plan to push for additional streetlights and replacement of light poles that have deteriorated or fallen and not been replaced. Uh, one of the things I've heard plenty about is, uh, residents wanting, uh, streetlights, whether and, um, um, due to the, um, issues that arisen in our neighborhoods, I'm asking the city council to adopt, uh, an exotic animal ordinance. And one, uh, we've made progress and had a lot of discussion on this. But I'm hoping, uh, in the next year that we can, um, have an ordinance, um, that the council agrees, uh, with governing short-term rentals or what's also known as Airbnbs. And, um, we, they all asked a lot about, uh, our wildlife, uh, situation with the rising number of coyotes as well as, um, uh, deer. Um, we're hopeful that we can get a regional solution. Personally, uh, I would like to see placed on the ballot, uh, a non-binding referendum, um, on community support for, uh, culling the deer herd. Uh, and finally, uh, we will need to assess the long-term impact of climate change and the COVID pandemic on our community. Life as we knew it prior to 2020 will not be the same going forward. And we'll have to, uh, we, we've had to pivot and, uh, to keep moving forward, I think there'll be doing more pivots. Uh, what other adjustments, uh, will have to be made in community life, family life, recreation, education, health, care, mental health, retail, commerce, and our office market have, um, yet to be determined. Um, the increase in severe weather events now appears to be a new normal. And strong winds and heavy downpours are, are taxing our public works, resources, and our systems to manage stormwater. Great investments have been made over the past few years by the city to alleviate basement flooding. But how much more will the city have to do and at what cost? Uh, another concern that occurs from several people who live on the tributaries of the Rouge is stream, stream bank erosion poses a threat to property owners. So many challenges lay ahead and I believe, uh, and I are up to the task of taking them on. Uh, we are committed to maintaining Southfield as a vibrant community known for great city services and a high quality of life. I look forward, uh, to working on your behalf over the next four years. And once again, I thank the voters for placing their trust in me for another term as your mayor. for placing their trust in me for another term as your mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Next we have our city administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, I too, on behalf of the administrate, the adminis- the entire administration, our directors and managers want to congratulate all of the newly elected officials. We're excited about the opportunity to continue to serve. And I, I, I too want to recognize the, the four individuals who put their, or the, the five other individuals who put their name out there uh, in front of the voters. It is not an easy uh, process and I commend that level of participation. The uh, I, I, and I just want to recognize the city clerk Hawkins, deputy uh, cl- city clerk Nicole Humphries and the entire team in the clerk's office. As you watch that process, and this is now the seventh municipal election, city election, then I watch that team and you watch them go through this uh, ev- every, you know, year and primaries and special elections. It is a tremendous effort and the citizens who come forth and work the polls, it's really a strength to our democracy. Uh, what I find so interesting, the, the how different it is from some of the recent statements we read regarding the election integrity. There is election integrity within our system and we, we see it here. Uh, and a lot of this, the noise and chatter we're hearing nationally is just that. I'll, we'll tell you where this inaugural is different. Um, it's usually a, a more festive o- occasion. And we get to enjoy each other's uh, company and, and, and uh, a feast-like uh, atmosphere. Um, so a- again, my entire management team and uh, congratulates all of the winners and we look uh, forward to serving under Council uh, President and uh, President Pro Tem Amanda Baum again. I do have one piece of business pertaining to the schedule. After last Monday's meeting, uh, myself and Deputy Administrator McGreena and um, Nicole uh, Dixon in, in my office took a look at this and we wanted to just change the, a couple of things. On the June thirteenth Committee of the Whole, uh, we wanted to change that to a hybrid meeting on June twenty first. Uh, a regular meeting, we wanted to change that to a Committee of the Whole meeting. Then July eighteenth, we wanted to change the Committee of the Whole, uh, we wanted to change that meeting to July eleventh. Uh, it was originally the eighteenth, we want to change it to the eleventh and conduct it as a hybrid meeting. August fifteenth, uh, the Committee of the Whole, we want to change that to August eighth um, and conduct it as a hybrid uh, meeting. And then October third Committee of the Whole, we wanted to conduct that, change that as a hybrid meeting. October twenty fourth, regular meeting uh, changed to a, a Committee of the Whole. And really what the administration's looking at is to not to have more than three weeks before a, a, a meeting. Sometimes I think we actually have one still, um, but it's more about the production. Having two hybrid meetings in July and August, two meetings in July, two in August allows the administration to keep things moving. Uh, and it's not just administration, the fact that we have so much planning business that needs to be taken care of. In addition, my original communication, I was proposing some meeting dates for budget after some dialogue with uh, coun- uh, council member, um, we, we added four meetings for uh, the budget. Uh, I will tell you, I had some additional conversation with uh, Council Finance Chairman, uh, Dan Brightwell and were actually thinking something before that early on in the uh, budget process. I, I'm offering those four meeting dates in May as a response that recognizes that the charter uh, requires that the mayor transmit the budget on, at the first regular meeting in uh, May. So I, I am asking council to hereby approve the uh, updates to the uh, twenty twenty-two council meeting schedule as uh, presented.
Okay. Council, can we have a motion? Or I'm personally ask if there are going to be any discussion. Let me have discussion first.
Councilwoman Banks, I have a question.
Yes.
Since we're making these changes, um, I don't know if council would consider moving the August thirty-first meeting that was scheduled, which is on Halloween, to Tuesday, November first. That's, and then that way, we will not be having a sca- um, a meeting on Halloween. Um, after our last meeting, um, I just felt really bad in case there. Are people that celebrate it with their children, grandchildren, have candy to pass out? Um, one more day, I don't think is going to make a difference. And personally, I would like to see the August the first meeting in August be August fifteenth and we can keep that as a high ver- hybrid meeting versus changing it to August fifteenth.
This is Mary.
Sorry, August eighth, excuse me.
Uh, this is, did you misspeak when you asked the thirty-first? I thought you said thirty-first of August?
Did I say, I meant, I meant October. I mean, I meant Halloween October.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did I say August?
I thought you did.
If I said August, I meant October thirty-first, change that to November first. And then the August eighth meeting as originally proposed, keep that and keep it as a um, or the August eighth meeting as newly proposed, change that back to the fifteenth, the hybrid meeting. Thank you.
Okay, uh, maybe I'll just ask, I'll go around and ask council real quick for any comments and updates since we started with Councilwoman Banks. Uh, Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, um, my, my comments are similar to what I mentioned before. Uh, I would like to have uh, council input into the budget before the budget is kind of like finalized and, and talk to Mrs. Zorn appreciably, though. And it's due, we can have some meetings in December and G, with respect to the budget, because if you wait into May, there's, he, and when they put the budget together, they should have direction with respect to how council would like to see the fund um, give it up um, and, and allocate it. And this year, we'll have um, you know, additional money from the American Rescue Fund. And uh, and uh, a couple of other things, we would have some additional money. So to give Mrs. Zorn and his staff direction with how to spend that money, the council really should be meeting with them as they are pulling the budget together, which is Gi- December and January, the, the, May.
And it, and it, and excuse me, Mr. uh, Councilman Brightwell, uh, with, with all due respect, our, our budget meetings, I totally agree with you, we have our special meetings. We're really just trying to concentrate on the twenty twenty-two calendar. The budget meetings, yes, and we can, we usually have a special meeting for all of those. So if we want to meet in December, it would be a special meeting and we will call for that. But it has nothing, it, it will not affect the dates that's on this twenty twenty-two calendar uh, right now, because we would have to add a special meeting like we uh, see Mr. Zorn did here for May. He has four special meetings and they're like Wednesday, Thursday dates and not on our Mondays and Tuesdays for our regular and hybrid meetings. So I, I agree with you and I think that we should do what you're asking, but can we first get this uh, twenty twenty-two calendar and then we will come back and say what days we want and we can ask for special meetings on Wednesday or Thursday?
No, that's, that's fine, that's fine. By, by, I just want to make sure that we uh, put something on the, put something where the council can give uh, an upfront um, idea and uh, what, where we are going with respect to the budget. And whether that December and or January, uh, but it are the, are the meetings in May, that many meetings, um, and I, oh, okay, well, okay, we pretty much just uh, deal with trying to lay this out for twenty twenty-two. And we will have, is, is my understanding, I'm, I'm using your word, we will have some special meeting. Will staff and will, Mr. Zorn in perhaps, I know he, he's in December and G, we'll talk about it offline, so.
Yes. And I think we should, we should include, and please excuse me, we should include the uh, Finance Director, Austin Michaels. Uh, and I, and I agree and, but we should have meetings dedicated for the budget only, where we talk about nothing else but the budget.
Sure, sure, no, that's fine. And clearly, well, Fred will be there and I'm sure he'll have Austin there. Uh, so, okay, well, that, that's fine. But my, my big thing is I just want to make sure we can get some, some input into the budget, um, because this year we will be, especially the ten million dollars we, that's, that's coming in, uh, that should be allocated. Uh, the additional money that uh, need to be spent on need assessment and we just have to start knocking those off. But I agree, I agree with you in with respect to just getting the cal- twenty twenty-two calendar together. And my, I hate that I'm just hyping on this budget thing, but that's going to be my, well, well, that's, that's my interest. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
That's fine, thank you. No, no question. Thank you, that's fine. Um, Councilman Cruz?
This, Madam President, I, I have no problem with what the administration has put forward as well as the one change that Councilwoman Banks uh, stated for the October thirty-first meeting. But I think that uh, we can hold it at that point. Um, you know, special committee meetings can be called when necessary and I think it's just going to turn into overkill if we try to over, overplan the year versus uh, allow some flexibility so that, you know, as we move forward, we know, we know what we want to do, you know, when we would like to do it, but um, as long as we're communicating back and forth, uh, we can call those special meetings when necessary, so. Um, so I, I can, I can go forward with this um, at this point with those, with the changes proposed this evening, but I don't want to add any other meetings at this time.
Thank you, okay. Mm-hmm. Councilman Fraser?
Yes, is the intent that uh, we make a motion to change the calendar tonight?
Yes.
Are we discussing it tonight to do, do it at the next meeting?
For it to be done tonight, I believe, uh.
Madam President, that is correct. Um, given COVID and the impact on our printer situation to get the city calendar out, if we could wrap this up tonight, um, I know Community Relations uh, intent as of Friday was to submit the calendar to the printer by the end of the day tomorrow. The amendments that have been suggested can uh, easily be incorporated. Uh, that those amendments August, August eighth becomes uh, August fifteenth, conducted as a hybrid meeting and October thirty-first, regular meeting conducted as a hybrid meeting becomes Tuesday, November first.
Does that answer your question, uh, Councilman Fraser?
Yeah, it does. I'm, I'm only suggesting that uh, whoever makes that motion better understand what you're talking about. I'm not going to make it.
Thank you. Did you have any other comments or questions?
No, I'm fine with whatever the, the team thinks makes Southfield work best.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins, any comments?
Uh, okay, there we go. Um, I, I'm fine with, um, well, I'm fine with the, the, the calendar and the changes that uh, Councilwoman Banks suggested. Uh, my only question is just what the, the October thirty-first slash November first date, uh, I, I don't know if that's going to be an issue. I guess for the clerk's office, that, you know, that being a week away from the election. I mean, if it's not, uh, if it's not an issue there, then it's not an issue for me to change it to November first, but that's the only thing that like pops out at me.
No, okay. And we'll, we'll ask the clerk for her input at the end, so, um, thank you for that. Uh, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I, I don't have any, any issues with the proposed changes as well as the changes that Councilwoman Banks uh, proposed as well. The, the, the one question I do have is, would it, and I don't know how this works with, with the charter, but w- would it make sense to, to take all of the Committee of the Whole meetings and change them to just hybrid meetings? And that way, you know, we can have our consent agenda items and then we can have our individual items and just vote on them. And then I, essentially it, it almost rules out rule tens at at, at every meeting, but I didn't know if that's something that we wanted to do or just maybe something to, to think about maybe for the, the next time we do a calendar, just change everything to a hybrid meeting. But that's the, other than that, I, I really don't have any other comments. I'm, I'm fine with all the changes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, and I don't know if we, I thought we had to, I don't know if we have to have the Committee of the Whole meetings uh, on here, so.
So, the, Madam President, just for a point of clarification, we, we've talked about, uh, the city administrator and I have, have talked about uh, what Council President Pro Tem Amanda Baum brought up. The, all of our meetings are regular meetings and they're classified in a subcategory as a hybrid or a Committee of the Whole. Uh, City of Southfield, when we originally uh, did the Committee of the Whole meetings, that's when the meetings were started at six o'clock. Then it went over to uh, the council chamber roughly around seven thirty PM and the city continued that tradition of the rule tens in the Committee of the Whole because it was two separate meetings. Now we're running the meetings, the Committee of a Whole meetings at six PM and it's just one meeting. So the question that was asked was if the rule tens are even needed. So I think we were going historically on what we were doing in Committee of a Holes because they were two meetings. But the question was asked, did we need the co- the rule ten? And what we came up with was if we're just doing the Committee of the Whole meetings and it's one meetings, that those rule tens wouldn't even be needed moving forward, if that's the format that council wanted.
Okay. Thank you. And, and to answer the question that was brought up uh, about, by uh, Councilman Hoskins about uh, November the first, is that too tight of a timeframe for the uh, uh, November eighth general election for the clerk?
Uh, that one day, as long as it's the Tuesday, it's a week out, uh, we should be okay. If it gets a little tighter, I will advise administration um, closer to that time if that becomes a problem.
Okay, okay. All right. Uh, Mayor, did you have any comments on the calendar at all?
I have to unmute them here, I have to find them on here, one second.
Discuss tonight, but to go back to where um, uh, Councilman Brightwell is coming from, uh, I would, I would ask Madam Chair that you consider having a retreat so that some of these things could be identified early uh, in the budget preparation process. Again, not to be discussed uh, tonight, but that would be a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, council, so um, can we have a motion?
I have a question, please, before we make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm not sure if we got an answer with reference to making all the meetings a hybrid meeting. And I guess I would defer to our City Administrator. Is it more, is it helpful to know that we're just having a study meeting? Or is it more helpful to you to have the option to have either a study and or regular to approve items?
If I may, uh, through the President, the option is much preferred. Um, internally, when we discuss that, our, we will work this that, uh, well, we would have a study session, um, consent items would be items. And what we discussed is, we would try to have as many items discussed one week, then the next session, or the next council meeting, it would be placed on consent. We would work to avoid what, uh, our, uh, asking council to have to approve an item. But in the event we had an item that was urgent, we would, that would allow us to move forward. Uh, the, but the hybrid would give us flexibility. I mean, they don't, um, and I, I know it's, I use the term, this is about meeting production and just taking care of the, the city's business. And much of that schedule is driven by outside, uh, development. And, um, so the hybrid gives the administration the maximum flexibility. And it's not too different than what we were maybe doing four to six years ago. I mean, we, uh, now we've, uh, what we might also want to do though was take a look at our rules and procedures and just, uh, memorialize the, the working definition of the hybrid meeting.
So, so would you like us to make all of the meetings?
Yes.
Minus the special budget adaption and the Wednesday 30 meet, Wednesday, Thursday meetings?
Or budget?
You want them all hybrid meetings and we'll eliminate committee of the whole?
Yes.
Okay.
They're all, they'll all be regular meetings conducted as hybrids.
Okay, well, then I.
The wisdom of council.
As long as that's legal, uh, we haven't heard from the attorney. Madam Attorney, can we do that?
Good evening, Madam President, City Council. Yes, I was part of the discussion last week. And as, um, Madam Clerk had already stated, that our meetings had always been regular meetings, but then there was a subcategory of the Committee of the Whole. So as long as the meeting, if we're having our, I guess what you can say is like a study session that we did in the past, and then we go into, uh, a regular meeting, then there's nothing that says we're doing that because we're holding a regular meeting.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman Banks?
Yes, it does, and I can make a mo- I can try to make a motion of that. If everyone else agrees with that.
Uh, Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Fraser.
Um, I don't have any problem with all the meetings being hybrid as long as we don't keep looking at the clock. The purpose of the Committee of the Whole is to get all of our questions answered so that when we make a final decision, we know what we're doing and, and we do it with intelligence. But if we start our meeting, if, all our meetings are, are hybrids and it's, and a knotty problem comes along and we say, oh, we got to get into the other room now because it's time to start the other meeting, and we haven't answered all of our questions, that troubles me. And I don't have a problem with all, all of them. I just don't want us to, to make decisions on partial information.
Gotcha.
Look, Mr. Fraser, I think that if we had the hybrid meetings, I think we, you know, when, if, when we go back in person, my, my assumption is that they would all be taking place in the chambers because, um, we would be voting on things, um, as part of consent, and then we'd have our regular hybrid meetings. So I think my understanding would be that we would just do it all in the chambers, not necessarily in the study room. But I guess that's also up for, up for discussion.
Well, we can set them up and, and determine how we're going to do them at a future time. Uh, but, um, Councilman Fraser's point is very well taken. We cannot rush through anything. We need to get all of our questions answered and we need to receive information just like we would anything else, so we could, uh, uh, table it, put it on hold, you know, bring it back at a future date. We don't have to vote on it just because it's on the agenda. So that, that just leaves us up to us how we want to conduct the business for that particular item.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that.
And, Madam President?
Yes.
The administration's intent would be, we would present an i- an item. Ideally, we would not ask for action until the following meeting. Just to give council that buffer time, uh, and questions that come up. If there's something where we need to do more research. Um, the typical sentence, uh, on an item on, you know, presented on January 17th would be if there's a consensus, this item will move forward to the hybrid meeting of, of January 24th. We would do everything to make that our normal practice unless we get something that, you know, meets that definition of Rule 10. Um, and, and we really do our best to make sure we, we don't have those Rule 10 items in, in front of council.
Okay, we appreciate that, thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Banks, I have another question.
Yes.
So how, um, using that example, how would we decipher the difference between what's going to be a study meeting and what's going to be a regular meeting?
I, i- if, if I may, Madam President?
Yes.
How we presented the, the agenda. We would present those items at our study under a subsection called Study Items, and then the Consent Items. Uh, at, at present, the Consent Items are appearing before the Study Items. We'd probably consider that same format. Those items that have been previously discussed and had a consensus of the council, we would list under the consent. Then those items under the study would be listed as Study Items, uh, with no formal action unless, you know, again, we would, that, unless there was something of an urgent nature, and then we would ask council for a Rule 10.
Um, I, because all of a sudden, I'm, I'm think I'm agreeing with Councilman Fraser. Um, I don't know, what, what do the rest of the, uh, my colleagues think about, um, changing the regular meeting conducted as a Committee of the Whole meeting to hybrid, just all hybrid meetings?
Madam President, can I chime in?
Yes, yeah.
I think we're getting caught up in the labeling of our, the subcategory of our meetings. Council can go and change the rules and there, and therefore decide how they want to conduct the meetings. I think we can continue the format as presented with the two or three amendments, and we can always go back, but this is just how we're categorizing a subcategory of our already proposed regular meeting. So that could be changed at, at any point. Um, I know it's starting to get a little bit confusing and tedious, but council's rules can be predicated on what type of meetings happen. Th- this agenda can be adopted as a regular meeting with the, uh, additional subcategory added on later if there is confusion. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Madam, Madam Chair, I have.
Yes, uh-huh, Councilman Bright.
I have a quick question. I thought I had a good understanding, but can someone give me a definition of hybrid meeting? A clear definition?
And hybrid meeting is the ability to be able to have an item presented during that meeting and voted on without Rule 10 action. These items are generally, um, presented by administration. Some of these items would be considered to be less controversial, and those items will be forwarded for the adoption or, or, um, for the approval from council if council saw fit. So it's, it's, the, the hybrid terms comes in as this a flex between the Committee of a Whole and a regular meeting.
Okay, so we, during a hybrid meeting, we could make the final decision on an item at that particular meeting if the votes are there? Is that what I, what I understand?
Correct.
Okay.
Without doing a Rule 10, you don't necessarily, you would not have to do a Rule 10. We could just ask for a vote.
Okay, okay, all right. This, okay, it was answered, thank you.
Okay. Nancy, did you still have questions?
Um, no, I, I'll just go along with the majority, thank you.
Okay, okay. Well, council, would someone make a motion?
I'll try, Councilwoman Banks. Um, that the 2022 council meeting schedule as presented, November 15th, 2021, be approved with the following recommended changes. The August 8th regular meeting be changed to August 15th. The October 31st regular hybrid meeting be changed to November 1st. And all the meetings on the calendar except for the May 11th, May 12th, May 18th, and May 19th meetings be changed to regular meeting conducted as a hybrid meeting.
I think we also want to add the June 13th special budget meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I hit that circle. And the June 13th special budget adoption meeting for 5:30 PM.
Support, Councilman Cruz.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz for the adoption of the 2022, uh, meeting schedule calendar as presented with the noted changes and amendments. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fraser?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, motion adopted. Thank you very much, ver- for this very insightful, uh, conversation and all of your input. Thank you, everyone. Um, Madam Attorney, any final comments?
Yes, good evening, uh, Madam President. I just wanted to offer congratulations to Mayor Cybert, Councilman Cruz, Councilman Hoskins, Councilwoman Mandelbaum, and of course yourself, um, Councilwoman Taylor, as well as, uh, Madam Clerk and our Treasurer that I just wanted to wish congratulations to you on. I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Uh, good evening again, everyone. Just wanted to, uh, congratulate all of my colleagues that were, uh, reelected and everyone that participated as candidates, as well as Councilman Hoskins said, it's never easy when you put yourself up to be a candidate in the public spotlight. Um, I want to thank the, uh, Southfield voters. Uh, we led the county, uh, with, uh, 15,721, uh, votes. Uh, all of Oakland County, we were at a 25% voter turnout. So we did see a significant increase from four years ago, um, of around six percentage points where it was 19.46. So we're steadily getting higher in the voter turnouts. All elections are local and we hope that more people will be engaged. But we did, um, do well, uh, the county percentage for, uh, this past election was at 22% and we were at 25% in the City of Southfield. So my hat's off to all of those residents here in Southfield that participated, uh, in this election. And as we continue to move forward, we'll try to get more people engaged so we can be at a higher, uh, voter turnout in the years ahead. Uh, I just want to thank my family and, um, my friends and my colleagues who did, uh, support me and endorse me for this election. I appreciate the confidence and look forward to working, um, continuously for the next four years for the people, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, City Treasurer, are you on?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank everyone, um, who voted for me, as well as, uh, all our, uh, all the other incumbents that won reelection. It's, uh, a sign of, uh, of confidence from the public that, uh, they reelected all the incumbents back into office again. And, uh, it's, uh, there's been a lot of tremendous things that have been done in the past few years, and there's a lot more great work to be done. Um, and, uh, you know, it's also behind the scenes, be, um, by our City Administrator and all the department heads that, um, that run the day-to-day operations of the city. There's, uh, definitely constantly new things, new initiatives that are constantly being done and, uh, to help grow Southfield and make it a, uh, phenomenal place to, to live and work. And so it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve so far and look forward to many great things to come in the future. Thank you again.
Thank you. Uh, our City Planner? Uh, our City Assessor? Our City Engineer? Uh, and I just want to add, uh, a thank you to everyone that worked very, very hard this weekend, which includes our, uh, Cable 15, Lisa Hawkins and John, and our IT, Renee and Hannah Husa, and our Communications, uh, Michael Mannion to prepare, and all the people in the, uh, City, uh, Clerk's Office, as well as, uh, Administration, to prepare the video and present it to us tonight of the, uh, swearing in, the, the oath of office. Uh, it was very, um, put together very, very well. So we do appreciate all the hard work and the time that you spent to do that for us. Uh, so again, thank you for that. I didn't want to close tonight without saying thank you. And I too also want to, uh, as was mentioned by our Treasurer, Irv Lumberg, thank all the departments and the department heads because as I campaigned this time, I, I needed and received all the help and support from all of the, uh, departments uh, with the responses to the residents when questions came up and for information as I needed it. Um, and not just me, but all of us, the mayor and other, uh, of my other, um, council members, when we had questions, when our residents had, uh, questions for us and we needed answers, the responses were quick and you all responded to us, um, as quickly as possible. So I just want to say thank you for that. I didn't want to leave anyone out. Okay, is, is there any other comments, uh, for the order of business tonight? Okay, hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.